Okay, so as always, no decisions were made during executive session. We will start again with finance and facilities. Ms. Pratt?
So can I do the report now?
No. I think we'll do the enrollment update now. So Scott.
So Scott is going to do the enrollment update for us. Sorry.
All right, so things are still looking pretty good. We have nearly 3,000 students enrolled for the fall for about 3,500 credits. That's 290 more students and over 3,000 more credits than we had last year at this time. The biggest change since the last time I talked to you, so throughout this cycle, new student enrollment's been running behind last year. It's now gone ahead of last year. We have over 70 more new students right now than we did at the same point last year. A big part of that increase is we had this past week what we called, it was an orientation event, but it was also a registration event. So our advisors pre-built schedules for students registered them. And then the students came in that day and they either verified their schedule or they could work with an advisor to make a change. And most of them just kept the schedule as is. So it sped along the process of getting them registered. So that was a big piece of our gaining ground in terms of new students. We called it Falcon Soar was the event. It worked so well, we're going to do another one in August. It'll be at the same time as a registration, as an orientation event for students who've already enrolled. But we want to give people another chance to enroll in this way and try to do everything in one day rather than having to come and meet with an advisor and potentially wait now because there won't be any appointments once we get to August. So we want to make it as efficient as possible. Yes, as you know, in your packet tonight, that's something that's going out to newly admitted students. The hope is with that that we try to make DCC look special. But we've been doing a lot with electronics and email and, you know, Facebook ads and things like that. But we want to have something physical and something that's on the kitchen table that the parents can see. And I think it really shows some of the things that DCC can do for the students. So we're hopeful that that's going to help with our yield this year. The packet you got is just our first pass at it. Since that packet, we have had the entire thing translated into Spanish. And the ones that are going to be going out going forward will have a front and a back with a front in English and the back in Spanish. So we'll be able to reach, you know, that's over 25% of our students now. So we want to have a wider reach, particularly with parents who may have Spanish as their first language. In terms of continuing student enrollment, we're up about 220 over last year. So the numbers are all the way across, look good. But we're only about two-thirds of the way through the cycle. And this is my time where I always give the caveat. So it could, things could go south. So some reasons things could get worse is a lot of the students who've enrolled have not done a FAFSA yet. So we still have to get students through with a FAFSA. So we're going to do some more nighttime events as we go through August to try to get them through. And realistically, a decent number of students don't need to do the FAFSA, the part-time students. So there's a chance that we're not in a bad shape because of that. But we still need to be careful and make sure they do it. The other thing is cross SUNY, the number of students who are depositing at multiple campuses has exploded. Many of them are depositing at two or three campus because they don't know what kind of financial aid they're going to be getting. So they're hedging their bets. My guess is that's happening at the community college level here. Though we don't have a deposit, perhaps they're enrolled, but they may still have opportunities at a four-year school where they could pull out and withdraw before classes start. So we've got to be careful with that, too. Application wise, we've got just under 4,000 now. Throughout the cycle, we've been running 1% or 2% ahead of last year. Over the past few weeks, we have a surge. We're about 3.5% ahead in applications now. We've almost caught up in terms of our own internal applications. Much of the increase were from the SUNY free weeks where people use the SUNY application. Most of those weren't particularly valuable. We found the yield on those is very low because usually it's a student who wants to go to a four-year. They have us as a backup, but many of the four years now are essentially open enrollment. Eighty to 90% of the students are admitted. So our being a backup there is not all that helpful. Looking deeper into the applications, so our applications of actual new students are actually down slightly. But our transfer applications are up 40%. That's over 200 more transfer applications than we had last year at this time. That also means we have a lot more applications from older students. We have 3% fewer applications from high school seniors, but many more from students who are older looking for different things. So the programs that are up reflect that older student application. We have aviation pilot and maintenance, air conditioning, engineering science, electrical technology, phlebotomist, clinical lab technician and EMT, all programs that skew older. That's where our biggest growth is right now. Moving to the residence hall, we have 243 deposits as of two days ago. Last year at this time, we had 77 fewer than that. The deposit number right now is above where we ended last year. So we've been able to get three suites back from the Anderson Center so that we have more room for the students. We expect to end up in the 280 to 290 range, which will fill the hall considering that the CIA will have half of the fourth floor still. So, you know, we're looking, if we continue this kind of growth in the hall, we don't even have to consider the CIA moving forward. So we've really made some great grounds with that. The team there does a great job of getting the word out. We've done a much better job of retaining the students. So it's really positive what's going on in the hall. And I think that's it. So any questions?
Questions for the county trustees? Scott, I just have a couple. You talked about the increase in the EMT program.
Yeah.
Which is so important. I know two of our county legislators are here. I want to welcome both of our liaisons, Brandon Waller and Bob Gorman. This is something that they hear about constantly at the county level. Obviously, working in healthcare, I can tell you there is an EMS crisis.
Right.
So it's great to hear that that's a program that you're seeing an increase. My question is, is it an increase in the EMT or the paramedic? And then what are we doing to further foster that?
So yeah, it is an increase for both. But it's also, so SUNY gave us extra money this year. They added a slight amount. $100,000 had to go to head mental health. $75,000 had to go to health-related fields. We are using the entirety of that or plan to. It hasn't been approved yet to help that program so that we have better capacity there.
How's enrollment with mechatronics?
Well, that is, in terms of credit enrollment, that's the ELT program and the applications are up maybe 15% for that program. We'll see where it ends up. I think, I think there's tangential things happening with, particularly air conditioning is way up. It's almost double what it was last year. It's a small program. So things related to it, engineering related to it, I think those are all up.
How many students are enrolled?
I don't know the exact number today that are enrolled in those programs.
If you can get us those numbers, I think.
Yes, yeah, I can.
For the August board meeting, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
That's obviously a center that's gotten a lot of attention.
Yes.
So I think seeing where that's at now.
Yeah, and those will be close to final numbers by that point.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will move on to our liaison reports. So Frank, the DCC Foundation?
Certainly. The foundation welcomed actor and film director Bill Duke. He visited campus with a small film crew to start his documentary because his career in film started here at DCC with his special support from Dr. James Hall. Diana is working with Central Hudson on a program to raise $50,000 for scholarships. The foundation is gearing up for the fall semester. And the foundation summer appeal will be going out here very shortly. So keep an eye out for that in your mailboxes. Board and volunteer service at an alumni, and an alumni brochure are being finalized for print. Foundation staff are moving offices internally. So they have some, you know, within their suite, I should add, they're just moving offices there. They're not going somewhere else on campus. A meeting was held with the foundation and the college to further discuss updates to our MOU agreement. In attendance was Diana Pollard, Lisa Morris, Adam Podpour, David Wise, Chairman Dupree, Trustee Cloud, and Dr. Jordan, along with myself. Stemming from this conversation, Chairman Dupree suggested that a quarterly joint meeting be held between some of the college trustees along with some of the foundation's executive board leadership. Also, Dr. Jordan may also meet with the foundation leadership monthly to strengthen some of those communications between the two entities. That's the report.
I don't believe that there is an association report this month. Seeing nothing further, unless anyone needs a break, I think we can go right into our board meeting. So Joya, if you're ready. All right. I'm going to call the July 23 meeting to order. It is 7:50. Joya, please call a roll. Six, six, 6:50, sorry. No, that's 6:50. I know we went long, not that long.
Mr. Robert Biersen.
Here.
Mr. Frank Costella.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Castle. Ms. Darah Cloud. Mr. Michael Dupree. Ms. Angela Flesen.
Present.
Ms. Lisa Garni.
Here.
Mr. Edis Guzman.
Present.
Ms. Evelyn Nenici.
Here.
And Ms. Linda Pratt.
Here.
Her present. We're present. I'm going to ask our new student trustee Bobby Biersak to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, why thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item tonight is approval of the agenda that I've already gone out of order on with changing up the roll call and Pledge of Allegiance. So my apologies for that. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So who?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
No one signed up for public comment tonight this evening? Thank you. Moving on, is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 28?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are no items for consideration from the academic and student affairs committee this evening. So we'll move to the board policy committee. Mr. Guzman.
Board policy committee met Wednesday, July 10, 2024. And items for discussion were the admissions age requirement policy. Dr. Susan Rogers reviewed some of the updates made to the admission age requirement policy, noted some of the changes made to the policy based off advice from legal counsel and consideration for the feedback offered by the DCC faculty and staff. The committee agreed to move this item forward for approval at this July 23 board meeting. We also had a discussion on Title IX sexual harassment and sexual assault policy. The committee reviewed this and Dr. Rogers discussed the new Title IX rule that will go into effect as of August 1st. The sexual harassment and sexual assault policy has been revised to meet the new regulations and requirements. Due to this policy being a compliance matter, this policy update will not go through its normal shared governance. And I will be bringing it up at this meeting in just a few moments. We also had some few informational updates, use of fund balance policy. Dr. Jordan brought forward the idea of adopting a fund balance policy. And committee, the committee reviewed a draft copy of the policy and discussed some changes that would, that they would like to make. Policy is still in discussion phase and will be brought forward to pelt and shared governance in the coming months in keeping with the board policies development protocol. Also, there was discussion of shared governance around the 11th trustee which is in discussion phase at the New York State Assembly, Bill B. 782-A, which if passed would become law and require committee colleges to add the 11th trustee to their college boards. The additional trustee would either be faculty or staff member. Also, there was a quick update on budget presentation. Dr. Jordan provided the committee with an update on the June 6 proposed budget presentation to the county legislature's Budget Finance and Personnel Committee. We also went over some board dates for 2024-2025, which are listed in our packets, I believe. And last item was an assessment of committee meetings. Committee did a quick assessment for their meetings as discussed and they felt that it would be better to, best way to maximize our time together. So we're having a little bit of discussion regarding that. Sorry I took so long on that one. But at this point, I will bring forward the resolutions. This evening, I bring to you Resolution 2024-54 and I offer the following resolution and move to its adoption. I'm going to read all of these because I think this one's important and there was a lot of discussion based on this. Whereas in keeping with good governance practices, the Board of Trustees' Policy Committee reviews the college's policy on a regular basis. Whereas to comply with regulations, have policy on the admissions age requirement and academic and safety concerns for the students who are minors has been written. And whereas a public hearing with the Board of Trustees generated feedback from the community college that was incorporated. And whereas the policy committee finds said policy to be appropriate to the needs of the college now, therefore be it resolved that based upon the recommendations, the policy committee and reviewed by the Board of Trustees, the attached policy on the admissions age requirement and academic and safety concerns for students who are minors, which shall be a part of the official minutes of this meeting, is hereby approved and be it resolved that this policy shall be effective immediately. Be it further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the resolution? I just want to thank everyone, both from the college community as well as the board for their input on this. I know that you've spent a lot of time working on this and I think that you've created a very good product that is going to serve our college community well. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next.
Thank you. I offer Resolution 2024-55 and offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas based upon this review and input from the members of the Board of Trustees, the policy committee has determined that the policy on sex discrimination and sexual harassment Title IX must be revised to be compliant with law effective August 1, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of this policy committee and reviewed by the Board of Trustees, the revised policy on sex discrimination and sexual harassment Title IX, which is attached and shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting, is hereby approved and be it further resolved that this policy shall be effective immediately and be it further resolved that the board reconsider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Moving on to finance and facilities. Ms. Pratt?
The finance and facilities committee met on Monday, July 8. The committee reviewed an RFP for the Duchess Hall elevator design. Adam Rathbone spoke to the committee about the college's recommendation to award the bid to DCAK MSA Architecture and Engineering PC due to their comprehensive proposal with innovative ideas and extensive experience working on educational facilities. Adam Rathbone also spoke to the committee about the five-year capital plan for 2025 and the outer years. He reviewed projected breakdown costs for each project through 2029. We also had a presentation from Mike Soltish providing the committee with the IT strategic plan. And Mike also provided a timeline and cost for completing certain campus-wide critical IT projects. We also had various informational updates, which were the same as the policy committee. So Edis already shared those with you. And the only other item was that Dr. Jordan discussed with us the resignation of the Rockland Community College president and commended the board for its oversight in adopting our, the growth mindset through strategic investment. And that was what we did. We have two resolutions for tonight. The first one is the approval of the bid for Duchess Hall elevator design. So I would like to present that. The resolution is whereas the Duchess Hall renovations, Phase One capital project was approved by the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees, State University of New York, the Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College and Duchess County Legislature. And whereas the request for proposals for the architectural engineering services for Duchess Hall elevator was requested on an RFP, DCC 082024, whereas there were five proposals received as shown on the tabulation sheet attached to this resolution. Whereas the college has reviewed each proposal and interviewed the top three firms that met the project specifications. Whereas the proposal received from DCAK-MSA Architecture and Engineering PC best meets the required specifications. And whereas the funds are available in the Duchess Hall renovation phase capital project now, therefore be it resolved that the contract for architectural engineering services for Duchess Hall elevator be awarded to DCAK MSA Architecture and Engineering PC, NIAC New York, in an amount of $167,000.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Costel, any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Thank you. Do I have to say that I'm reading this into the record of 2024-56 per minute? Okay. Because if I didn't, I don't want anything to not be proper. So the next resolution is for the approval of the five-year capital project plan for 2024 through 2029. This is resolution number 2024-57. Whereas the County of Duchess and the State University of New York require the submission of a project list and estimated cost of capital construction and improvement projects for a five-year period. And whereas the educational, administrative, and support needs for rehabilitation, preservation, and improvement of facilities have been reviewed through the academic and facilities master plan, our next 10. And the master plan recommended the specific projects and priorities as indicated on the attached list. Now therefore be it resolved that the campus facilities project listed on the attached document, which is to be made part of the minutes of this meeting, are hereby approved as Duchess Community College's five-year capital plans for the period 2025 through 2029.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? I just want to make sure it's clear for the record that this is a plan. All of these proposals would come before the board again for approval individually when they come forward. So I think the best way to look at a capital plan is kind of a wish list of everything that needs to be done, kind of an all-encompassing. But then you have to look at each one individually. What are we able to do financially? Have our priorities shifted? Does something need to be moved up? So it's a working document. But again, we are not spending all of this money right now. These are all programs and all projects that would come individually before the board. Anything further on this? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Moving on, the personnel committee discussed those items that Edis and Linda spoke about previously. And then there's two resolutions that we have this month and it's on the board meeting dates and then a retirement. So I will introduce both of those. Resolution 58, I offer the following and move its adoption. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the president of the college, the attached list of board meeting dates for 2024-25, which shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting is hereby approved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Resolution carries. Resolution 59, I apologize in advance if I say this individual's name wrong. Just want to put that out there. It's not an easy name to say. So Resolution 59, I offer the following and move its adoption. Be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the president of the college, the retirement of Elaine Marian Thopulis, nursery school educator in the Department of Early Childhood and Elementary Education is hereby granted effective August 15. Approval is granted to pay the appropriate benefits earned. And in recognition of the dedicated service to Duchess Community College, Ms. Marian Thopulis is granted a merit status upon her retirement. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees extends its sincere appreciation to Ms. Marian Thopulis for her valuable contributions to the college's educational programs during her tenure and wishes her the very best in her retirement and future endeavors.
Second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Costella, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. So I want to welcome our student trustee Bobby Biersak to his first meeting here representing the student community. I don't expect you to have a long report tonight, but certainly. Get your feet wet and get going. We're excited to have you here.
Of course.
It's an important, really important role that you bring representing our students.
Thank you. So very short report today. So for the new school year, we only have as of right now a trustee, myself, and a chief justice, Catherine Pena Gomez. We still need a president, a VP, and a treasurer. And we have a candidate coming on possibly for coordinator of internal affairs, Maya Chekhan. So that's still plenty of SGA vote, but done deal basically. So we'll still need a president, a VP, and a treasurer. Been looking nonstop all summer. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the chairs report. DCC hosted the 32nd Annual Beacon Conference coordinated by Mark Hondon and Mariana Milo. The conference recognizes the outstanding community college students in the mid-Atlantic region featuring diverse disciplines. This year, 45 students from 11 community colleges presented their research through posters and oral presentations. John Alley, Joseph Riley, and Brianna Abati have transformed DCC's career services. The following highlights some of the team's accomplishments. Increased classroom workshops by 173% from fall '22 to spring '24. And increasing career appointments. So from summer '22 to summer '23, 49% increase. Fall '22 to fall '23, 35% increase. And spring '23 to '24, a 19% increase. So really great work being done by that department. DCC co-sponsored The Other Side of the Door in collaboration with Mental Health America. Veterans use symbols and images to express the emotional landscapes they have endured as it relates to mental health. This art will serve as an educational tool, helping the public veteran understand the often hidden mental health needs of veterans. DCC hosted Congressman Pat Ryan's Veteran and Families Resource Fair on June 1st. Over 20 vendors attended, providing resources and services to more than 125 veterans and their families. On June 20, Duchess Community College was very excited to welcome U.S. Secretary of Education Dr. Miguel Cardona and Congressman Pat Ryan for a Career Pathway Roundtable Discussion. The event highlighted examples of successful career-focused initiatives across the Hudson Valley, featuring leaders and students from P-12 education, higher education, and industry. Dr. Jordan and ELT student Matthew Camfield spoke on the panel, underscoring DCC's role in meeting regional workforce needs and promoting career technical paths. On June 25 and 26, DCC faculty, staff, and administrators attended the first Hudson Valley Childcare Coalition Summit addressing local childcare challenges. This also prevented, provided DCC the opportunity to showcase the nursery lab and daycare center, demonstrating the college's commitment to high-quality early childhood education. The HSE program held its graduation ceremony on June 27, recognizing 36 graduates. 16 of the 36 were the Spanish HSE program. So to accommodate the high number of Spanish-speaking students and their families, Judith Lopez, Francisco Roche Escala, and Emma Slate helped to ensure that the program and graduation letters were available in translation. And the remarks were also delivered in both English and Spanish. On July 18, DCC hosted a grand opening and ribbon cutting for our new community garden outside the tennis courts. Lacey Riley was instrumental in providing, driving the program forward, working with the DCC Foundation to secure the necessary supplies and partnering with Cornell Cooperative Extension. The community. The community garden, supported by Assembly Member Jonathan Jacobson, will increase the capacity for the pantry to distribute fresh produce to students and community members in need, while also fostering hands-on learning opportunities, vocational training, and college connections for City of the KFC youth through the Gurdantian Program. I have to say, I was at an event with Mayor Flowers the next evening, and she obviously is a huge supporter of this college. And she was like, oh my goodness, the garden is so exciting. So just continues to show the work that the college is having in our community and the instrumental relationship that we have with the City of the KFC and really fostering that is so important. That is it for the Chair's Report. Moving on to the President's Report.
Thank you. I want to start with celebrating the county legislature for, and as you heard, we have two representatives with us this evening, but for adopting the DCC budget. We worked really vigorously to make sure that we were transparent with the process and that we informed the legislature and the county executives as much as we could about how the budget was being built and what it was supporting and so forth. And that process got good reviews, and we plan to repeat that process. So thank you to our legislators who are with us and to those who are not here for your continued support of DCC and all that we do to promote economic development and workforce development here in Duchess County and beyond. We also, last week, had the opportunity to meet with County Executive Serena to review with her the college's Academic and Facilities Master Plan. We presented that master plan to the legislature last year and to the county executive's office, but that was before County Executive Serena took office. So we took the time to really make sure that we shared with her, and we brought in Tony Alfieri, who was one of the architects who worked on that project, to make sure that she understood what was in that master plan and how we were thinking of proceeding with it. Coming out of that conversation, we agreed to do something similar to what we did with the operating budget. And that is to do a sort of roadshow to make sure that we develop awareness about the state of the campus and the kinds of redevelopment that needs to happen in order for us to be a first-class, top-notch institution as we've always been. So I look forward to working with County Executive Serena on that. And the last thing I'll mention is that last week we spent, the leadership here at the college helped. The President's Advisory Council and my cabinet spent the better part of last week in a retreat. It was a really good opportunity for us to regroup and decompress and to move above all the day-to-day work, much of it you heard about in Scott's report that led to the kind of wildly, achieving the wildly important goal that we have for enrollment. And so I thought it was a great start to really strengthening our team here at DCC. And I look forward to sharing with you as the months go by the kinds of outcomes and activities that we continue to participate in. So that's it for my report.
Is there any further business to come before the Board tonight? Seeing none, the date of our next meeting is August twenty-seventh. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. See you all on August twenty-second.